That's the thing, you know that. I'm sure you know that.
I have the homework, sir.
Good thanks, how are you?
Happy New Year.
Happy New Year.
Yep, I was pretty shocked.
All right, good evening, Happy New Year. It's Tuesday, January 14th, and we're at the city council meeting, and the first order of business would be the roll call.
Bartlett.
Here.
Forsma.
Here.
Caraballo.
Here.
Doom.
Here.
Hiley.
Here.
Hirsch.
Here.
Jensen.
Here.
Legaki.
Here.
Fieski.
Here.
Reeves.
Here.
Riley.
Here.
Schumacher.
Here.
There are 12 Alders present.
Okay, thank you Holly. We have a couple presentations tonight. The first one will be from TDS. They have a team here that'll present. I think Josh is gonna introduce everybody, and you can come on up. Slides are in your packet.
Do you want this up on the screen?
Oh yeah, you can put it up. Good evening, I'm Josh Worrell. I'm manager of business development for TDS Telecom. I'm joined tonight by Aaron Way from marketing, John Deegan from NS, and Matt Schulte from our network services group. So between the four of us, we're hoping to answer any all questions you may have tonight. We're gonna be doing a hopefully short presentation. There's a lot of slides here, I'm gonna breeze through them fairly quickly, but if you guys have direct questions or anything, feel free to raise your hand or throw something at me, and I'll stop and address that question. So this is gonna be a presentation on our plans for 2020 in Stoughton, and our expansion into Stoughton, and just a little bit about who TDS is as a company. So here, TDS is a Fortune 500 company. We're in 30 states across the United States. We fluctuate between 540 and 520, somewhere in there. So we're actually a Fortune 1000 company, but we're a large company, the largest wireline company in the country. That sounds large, but the discrepancy for number seven and number one is fairly substantial, so in the telecom space, we're a smaller business. So we're family, we're publicly traded but family owned, so that's a very unique situation. The company started 50 years ago. Our founder Roy Carlson bought and acquired ILEC properties, they're small phone companies, and the goal at that time in the company was to bring phone to the rural areas of the company, and as we, or country, and as we expanded, that also gave way to video, and then broadband, of course, is what people want today. You can see some of our accolades up there. We're very proud of our diversity and women in the workplace, and those are some of the most recent awards we've won over the past few years. This map here, that is our territory. It's kinda hard to see, but if you look in, the footprints within those states are our ILEC properties in blue, and the pink is our cable properties. We're a unique company and a portfolio company in that we do cable and wireline. That's unique. Most telecom companies do one or the other, so we have experience in both, which is unique in that space. Go to the next slide. So how did we get here, and why are we in Stoughton? TDS has, over time, pursued two pretty aggressive fiber strategies. In the last slide, all of our footprints across the United States were economically feasible. We went to our own footprint and overbuild our existing copper plant with fiber. This is a way to future-proof that fiber to be able to offer the speeds and connectivity that people need today. In all of the areas that we did that, we saw tremendous success, well over 50% market penetration. So not only were we going to our existing places and building out, but if anything that's greenfield or new development, new construction, commercial or residential, we are building fiber into those today. So that helped us, that success drove, and we, our corporate parent kinda looked at that and said, "Hey, you had really great success overbuilding existing territories with fiber. What does it look like if we went to a city that had never heard of our, had never heard of our company, or had our service, or knows nothing about, and they're just used to their incumbent providers? What does it look like if we come in and overbuild the fiber?" Go one more. So enter Sun Prairie, Wisconsin. So in 2017, we started construction in Sun Prairie, Wisconsin. This was an area we had never offered service before. It's a town of about 30,000 people and 10,000 households. This was a unique situation in which they were actually already building their own municipal fiber network, and they were in a couple neighborhoods trying to offer a different choice for internet. We came in and said, "Hey, you know, sell us your network." The issue they were having is they were very capital restrained. It was gonna take them about 12 to 15 years to build the entire city out with fiber. So we said, "Hey, sell us the network, we'll do it in 15 months." So we started construction in May of 2017. We turned our first customer up in September. December, by the time we shut down, we had launched every neighborhood in Sun Prairie except for four DFN areas. That's just what we call neighborhoods. And it was a tremendous success. We launched those next neighborhoods the next spring. The total build was done in about 16 months, and today we have over 55% market share. So we've taken that success, and we've expanded our funnel, and we started looking for towns in and around Madison or our existing ILEC properties to do the same thing again. So as you can see up here on this map, in blue is our ILEC territories and green have been our fiber expansion communities. So we added four in and around Dane County, which was DeForest, Cottage Grove, McFarland, Oregon. We're also building Manona, which is not on that map, and now we're going to come to Stoughton. So in addition to these communities, we've also expanded the funnel, and we're doing a cluster in central Wisconsin that comprised of Stevens Point, Wausau. We even launched our first out-of-Wisconsin, out-of-territory build in Coeur d'Alene, Idaho. We started that in July, and we started, turned up our first customer, I believe, in December of this year. So it's also been a great success. This is the entire community benefits. Everywhere we go, we've targeted communities who have great demographics, great household growth, and that are underserved by the incumbent providers. Generally speaking, the communities we go to, if you talk to the residents, they feel like either the cable company or the wireline company has a monopoly, and competition is powerful. And everywhere we've gone, we've proved that out. When we entered the Sun Prairie market in September, the incumbent cable provider upgraded their service from 60 to 100 meg, and then six months later, for free, upgraded it from 100 to 200. So the proof is there. Competition is powerful, and generally speaking, everywhere we go and do this, we see tremendous results. This is a little video. If you guys have the packet, we can send you this link. It's on TDS Fiber website. We're not gonna play it now. You can just, we can send you that link if you'd like to view it later. It's mostly the benefits of fiber and what it can do to property values, what it can do for your community, what it can do for the city, just all the values of fiber. So Stoughton as a partner. So these fiber builds, we have to be very upfront and honest, these are stressful on the community. This is very difficult. We have to go through and actually lay fiber lines down every street and to every home. We'll be working in the right of way, we'll be working in the easement, and there's a lot of education with the residents on what an easement is, where the easements are. Generally speaking, we try, and we'll get more to this in the construction standpoint, we try to stay to the existing infrastructure, meaning if it's aerial today, or if the cable, wire, or the copper phone company is on aerial plant, we'll be trying to stay aerial. If it's buried, we'll go buried. If it's buried in the front, we try to go to the front. If it's buried in the back, we try to go to the back. There are instances where it has to be different because there's either not an easement there or we don't have access there and we can't go. And we'll be taking those in step by step. We're gonna have to be working very closely with not only your public works department, but Stoughton Utilities, and we've already had many meetings with them to help coordinate the aerial distribution, our fiber transport, which has already started work, and will continue, and then the distribution, which is actually into the customers' house or their backyards. So communication between us and the city is key. Anytime we've had issues in and around communities involving our fiber builds, it's a breakdown in communication, and the city or the utility and TDS are not on the same page. So we'll be working very hard to keep you all informed, keep everybody in the loop, as well as your residents, to make sure everybody's on the same page about where we are, what we're doing, and how we're going about it. Okay, I covered that. You can go to the next one. This is just briefly our mission values and what our company stands for. That's on our website, you can see there. But we, TDS preaches integrity, team above self, invest in people, sense of urgency, and be good citizens. So there's a lot of things. We've already have conversations with city officials. We wanna be a good corporate partner for the city and invest in Stoughton. We think this network is the way to do it, and there's some other relationship-building activities that we have going on as well. That's our management team. Everybody here works for one of those people up there. It's our senior leadership team, and I'll let you cover that another time. That's our beautiful location in Madison on Junction Road. Does anybody have any questions? Yes.
Yeah, I just wondered what it costs for us, for the city. What's our cost for direct and hidden?
Yep. So the direct cost is nothing. It's about, and we have a few slides coming up, at the handle of the costs and what the construction will take. It's about a $10 to $12 million capital investment on TDS's part to put the fiber in throughout the right-of-ways in Stoughton to offer, and it'll cover about 6,500 addresses. So there are no direct costs for the city. However, there will be, I believe, some.
Locate costs?
Yeah, Digger's Hotline.
Yep. So Digger's Hotline, you know, we're gonna be calling in locates, and we'll have to coordinate with your team on how we're doing that and where we're doing that, but you will see an increase in locate costs, and that's generally the only cost you'll have.
The Digger's Hotline is, law prevents us from recouping our costs to do that. Much of that work, we subcontract out because we don't have the staff to do it all internally.
Any estimate, Mayor, about how much that would cost?
I don't know what that cost is. I think that's something that Utilities is working with, and we can follow up and get you that answer.
Yeah, I would like to know how much it's gonna cost. How much is it for your cost, again?
It's about a $10 to $12 million capital investment.
$10 to $12?
Yes.
Thank you.
Yep. Any other questions, and we'll keep going. Yes ma'am, did you have one?
Well, I was just wondering, I mean, if you're going on people's property, and obviously you have to... What prevents one of your competitors then to come in and do the same thing? So if TDS comes in, and then say Verizon or Spectrum comes in, it could be a never-ending, you know, problem with our city where things being, constantly being dug up or done. So there's nothing that precludes anybody else from doing the same thing next year?
That's correct. However, we can't go everywhere. We're restricted to the street right-of-way or the easement in which we have to put, so it's technically wouldn't be encroaching on people's property. So there are specific places we have to go. In regards to can anybody do this, yes. However, once we over, your existing incumbents don't have incentive to overbuild their existing plant with fiber. So they're not gonna be coming in and doing any sort of construction like this on a large scale because they already have plant here. They're not going to spend additional money when they can already offer service here. Other providers can do it. I would tell you that it's highly unlikely, once we start building fiber here, you would ever have another company come in to overbuild with fiber to the home because it just doesn't make sense to have that many, there's no business case for that many competitors in one market. You may have one day Verizon coming in to do some 5G stuff, but it will not be as intensive as fiber to the home everywhere across the entire city.
A second follow-up question. I know that with 5G, there's stated some potential health risks. Is there any health risk with your fiber at all?
No. Sir? Did you, I see a hand over here. Okay. So the network will consist of about 95 miles of new conduit and fiber optic cable. 23 of that will be aerial plant, 72 miles of it will be buried. And we will work with Stoughton Utilities, hand in hand, because there will be make-ready and pole replacement costs that we will have to incur. In other words, when we go to put our infrastructure up on an existing pole, the pole has, there's work that has to be done to assess if that pole can handle the additional weight. If it can't, that pole must be replaced. That cost comes to us to replace that pole. And then if the pole can handle the weight, there's then make-ready work. Make-ready work is basically just shuffling the existing facilities on the existing pole to make room for a new provider to stay within all of the code height limits. This is just a few of the pictures of some of the equipment we'll be using. Most of the buried work will happen with this directional bore rig. All the aerial work will happen with a bucket truck, so this is some of the equipment you can expect to see in and around town.
Some of this equipment you may already be seeing. Some of it, if it's on the outskirts of town, might be theirs. I know within town, especially on Page Street, I believe it might be a line that's been doing some work. So you've probably seen, I think, what do they call it, a trencher? Is that what they call that?
Yeah. Ditwisch.
Ditwisch, same thing.
Yep.
So you probably have already seen that, and some of the neighborhoods have already experienced. Some good, some not so good. Restoration is something that, you know, we're really gonna focus on, and these guys are, you know, it's in our guidelines of what the expectations are as far as restoration and timetables and them sorts of things. Some of that is in the application materials that we've approved here in the past.
Absolutely. Restoration's always a huge, a huge conversation around the cities. Generally speaking, we try to give you as many resources you have. The mayor has my cellphone. We give you guys the resources between FiberTech and our network services groups, and then the residents will have phone call, or numbers to call to be able to get directly to either FiberTech or our contractors with issues specific to their property, so we can log those and avoid them during construction. So your, the construction partners that will actually be doing the work here in town, FiberTech Consulting will be the company that is helping manage or quality control our contractor. The buried work will be handled by NP Next Level, and MyTech Services will be responsible for all of the aerial plant here in Stoughton. So all of those companies, yes.
One other question. So fiber is different than cable?
Yes.
Because it's a, it's a different kind of material. So when the Digger's Hotline goes to look at underground stuff, do they detect fiber?
Yes.
Okay.
It has a locate member associated on the outside sheet.
So they can detect.
Glass itself does not locate, but the outer sheet it does.
As I say, I know very little about fiber, and I, and I don't know, there has to be some kind of metal because the detectors are detecting, having detected.
Yes. The fiber facilities can be located, and just to clarify, the three types of technologies. You have your phone company who's using primarily copper plant or old copper wire, and they're, they've either bonded or done something to get higher speeds. You have COAX, which is your cable company, and then we will be coming in with fiber, which is essentially glass, glass tube, and we transmit the data over, over light, and it works well with our IPTV product as well. Yes.
Can you explain your reasoning for not burying everything?
Yes. Mainly it's because we found in a lot of the other areas, if you're currently fed off of a pole today, you don't have beds in your yard, or if there's poles going through your backyard, you don't have beds in your yard. And if we change the infrastructure or go away from it, we're adding beds or telecom infrastructure to your yard that wasn't already there. So we're trying to be as least intrusive as possible. And then it becomes a cost thing. Generally speaking, aerial tends to be cheaper, buried tends to be more expensive. Generally speaking, that's not always the case. There are some times in which there might need to be in a mile stretch, if there's 50 poles that need to be placed in a row. The Stoughton Utilities will come to us and say, "Hey, we have all these poles to replace." They might not necessarily want to do the work to replace them all, and it might be easier on us just to bury it for that stretch. So generally speaking, we try to follow the existing infrastructure, but there are caveats to that, and it's location-specific.
You can go ahead, ma'am. You may have already said this, and I lost it, but do you have a kind of a schedule? Is this like Sun Prairie where your intent is to come in and build out the entire city over, say, a 12 to 18-month period? And if so, what does that schedule look like?
Yep. So put a few slides forward, and let me see on the map. Oh, let me go back, let me click on that real quick. This is real quick, this is just our construction notification. Doesn't really have any of our branding on it. We're not yellow, but this is meant so that residents can see it. They don't get thrown away necessarily. So this goes on everybody's door one to two weeks before construction starts in their specific neighborhood. We also have a mailer that looks exactly like this, and everybody will actually receive a piece of mail so we know, we can verify that they got notice, notified that construction was starting. We've had, these are 50/50. In the past, we've had people tell us, "Hey, I didn't get it, I did get it." The mailer ensures that we can say, "Hey, yep, we gave you notification. Here it is." In addition to that, we'll be doing social media posts, we'll be taking out ads in the newspaper. We'll be doing as much as we possibly can to get the word out to what we're doing. Inevitably, people will call and say, "I didn't get notified." We'll miss people. We'll try to do the best we can to get everybody, but some people will just miss it. Okay, I'll answer this guy, this first question. So this is a overview. Those are tiny, sorry if you can't see that, DFNs, and that is gonna be everywhere we are building fiber-to-the-home, commercial and residential. The answer to your question is yes, there is a schedule. We do not have a solid schedule yet on when service will launch in Stoughton. We know the transport construction, so there's two pieces, transport construction and distribution. The transport construction's going on now, and that is the ability for us to get network to Stoughton in and out. So it's a diverse network, meaning it's coming in and going out. So if a line gets cut coming in, it goes back around and gets fed. It makes the network very reliable, so you have good service here in Stoughton. That works happening now through the winter. It's already getting close to being within the city limits. The distribution will start probably in the spring, April, May. That's when we'll start marketing as well, sending, marketing to people's houses, letting them know what products and services are available. The reason we don't have a solid schedule yet is because it's primarily dependent on the make-ready schedule. So we need to work with Stoughton Utilities to get them how many poles we're trying to get on, and we have that preliminary data to them now. And then we, they have to work, there's a lot of pole work that needs to be done to gather data on what poles need to be replaced, what poles need make-ready, and then they do their due diligence on how long it's going to take to replace those, get that back to us, and from there, we back into a schedule. So it's dependent on working with Stoughton Utilities on how quickly that work can be done. The buried work will go a little quicker and will be primarily on us, and we'll be able to turn up certain neighborhoods that are buried earlier than others, but we don't have a firm schedule yet, and we're hoping by maybe spring to firm up that schedule, is that right? So around spring, by the time we get our website live and start marketing to residents, when you go online to tdsfiber.com and punch in your address, it'll bring in what little DFN or neighborhood you're in, and when we expect to launch in that neighborhood.
And the reason they're here tonight is, originally they were gonna come in the spring and April, and with the favorable weather, they've been able to work ahead on some of the work, and they're getting closer to the city, and we just felt we wanted to bring them in here tonight so the council and the community kinda knew what was going on and what all these trucks were doing. And it's a pretty exciting thing for Stoughton. People that have used fiber optic can certainly appreciate the benefits of having that versus maybe something other than that. So that's kinda why we're having this conversation tonight, and we expect this to be an ongoing conversation. Did you have a follow-up?
Just one more question.
Yes.
So I'm the city attorney here in Stoughton, and I'm also the village attorney in the village of Oregon, whereas TDS built out last year, I guess.
Yes.
And you mentioned earlier that a full build-out like this is kinda stressful.
Yes.
For the community, and for you guys, I know. One of the things I think TDS was able to do with Oregon, and I'm wondering if you can do it here, is to have a dedicated person available for any calls to the community, public works department, clerk's office, wherever, for people in the community who are, who are calling because gee, there's somebody digging in my backyard, what's going on? You know, someone at TDS who has authority, knows what's going on, who's available to handle all those calls. Is that something you think you'd be able to do with your build-out here in Stoughton?
So the number that will be on all of our flyers is directed specifically to IVR, that's specific to Stoughton, that goes directly to FiberTech? Correct. Goes directly to FiberTech, who is QC-ing all the work in Stoughton, so.
And it is the same, same FiberTech that did Oregon?
Yep. So same crews that did Oregon, same managers. So if they call that number, they say, "I'm at so-and-so address, leave a message," or if they get whoever's there, they will actually physically, if they need to, come out and, you know, look at their property, say, "Oh, you got sprinklers here, you got there," and address those concerns. So yes, that number on the construction flyer is specific for Stoughton, and will get you directly to the people that are managing Stoughton. You also, through the relationships with the cities and the public work directors, will have access to John, Matt, and myself. Any issues that get out of control and get, that need to be escalated can of course be escalated to me right away, and we can figure out who needs to take those on. So we're, we will be putting in place layers of resources for the city. If residents need additional help, or they feel like they can't get anybody at TDS, we're gonna be providing those layers of resources for them. Similar to Oregon, correct?
Alda Person Reeves, did you have a question?
Yeah, I did. I just, in terms of the timeline and mapping, there is a map in here, but it's pretty tough to see any street names. So I just wondered during the rollout, is there a map that could be maybe funneled through, whether it's public works to be shared with council periodically that's specific, so that we could look at it and say, "This is where they're at, and this is where they're headed," and help us understand timelines and locations as far as the rollout?
The answer to the specific maps is yes. So all of our permitting's gonna have to be done through the city, and you'll actually get staking sheets, which will specify exactly where the facilities will be placed, correct? So those sheets will be available to you guys, so if you wanna get that granular and look exactly where the facilities are, you will have access to those staking sheets before we start construction because it has to be permitted through the city. As far as like individual addresses, you of course will be able to go to tdsfiber.com, punch in your individual address, and see what DFN you're in, and see if you're in the build footprint. But if you're looking for specific details, yes, staking sheets are gonna be provided throughout the permitting process because it has to be approved by the city before we can start construction. Yes.
Have you considered a public meeting on this?
I'm sorry.
Have you considered a public meeting to present this to the Stoughton residents?
Yes. So throughout the build process, the beginning, we will do what we call fiber forums, and Aaron actually is involved in those, and we pick places that we can kinda fit large groups of people. We'll do different times. We'll send out social media blasts and invite people there to ask questions. We bring people from construction, marketing, sales, so we can cover kinda the gambit of questions that people might have. So yeah, resources like that will be available. Those will be starting in the spring throughout the build process.
Did you have something you wanted to add?
Yeah, just a little background on our communication with TDS so far. We've had numerous meetings with the team from TDS about the build-out, and as you mentioned, the staking sheets, we have those. We could share those with you at Public Works if you'd like, periodically giving updates on where they're at, where they're going. And then at your direction, we can bring that forward to council and share that as well.
Thanks.
And Alda Person Legaki?
Just a detailed question. Mayor used a term that I'm familiar with, fiber optic. And you're using the word fiber?
Yeah.
Are they the same product?
They are the same thing.
Thank you.
Any other questions, or Alda Person Riley?
Thank you. What percentage of households do you intend to serve ultimately? I think you used a percentage, and I didn't, I didn't catch it.
I believe, and it's in the slide, I believe we're gonna cover 6,500 addresses throughout this build, and that'll be residential and commercial.
And do you have any idea what percent, well, the entire city then?
I believe it's the entire city limits, is that correct?
City limits, yeah.
The city limits will be covered. If you live outside the city limits, it's hit or miss on whether you're actually make it into one of those DFNs, but it'll be the city limits of Stoughton.
Thanks. And then with respect to the fiber optic, that is much faster than the product that Spectrum offers, if I understand correctly?
So our entry levels, so we do TV, phone, and internet. Our entry level speed for broadband is 300 meg. It's symmetrical, so that's 300 up and 300 down. And then our medium flavor is 600 meg, and then we offer a gig as well.
Okay, and is that generally better, or excuse me, faster than what Spectrum offers?
So I'm not sure what Spectrum's offering here. In Pittsburgh, they offer 200 meg. So if they offer 200 here, then it would be faster, yes.
The type of transmission though is generally faster than the COAX, am I correct, or am I wrong?
So 200 meg is 200 meg. It's just the medium that that data is passing through.
I'm sorry, I guess what I'm asking is, does fiber have advantages over COAX with respect to how it delivers services, speed-wise, internet, et cetera?
I would say, my political answer to that is COAX has, is a very substantial infrastructure for broadband. The fiber would have more capacity than COAX, and generally, the term we use is a future-proofer community. So once we put the pipe in the ground, or put the glass in the ground, 20 years from now, if 5 gig is now what 100 meg is, we would change the electronics in your house and change the electronics in our backend, and the pipe can handle the capacity. So it has, it has advantages over COAX, yes.
Thank you.
Way too technical for me.
Wait, I've got one more.
I figured that was coming. Go ahead.
So, because you're splitting your network up between buried and aerial and that, in the aerial one, you know, obviously, like last year, we had a pretty good storm knocked out some of our power lines and things like that. Are you setting your network up as a noted network so that you can redistribute or how?
Well, there will be rings set up internally. So, we have a ring. We have a transport ring out of Stoughton going towards Oregon. We have another going towards McCarland. So, we have that redundancy there. Internally, in town, we have six, excuse me, we have six nodes that we're setting. We are building an internal ring within the city limits themselves for that redundancy as well.
Where, like where would you, how is these nodes? I'm assuming they're probably not, they're not real large, but...
It's kind of like a large refrigerator, if you would.
Right.
Five out of the six right now, we have easements for where we approach the private parcel owner. So, we have those pretty much nailed down so far.
Okay.
You can, the city has those locations already. So, they're aware where we're placing those, and we've worked with them to place them in a spot that works well for us, based on our network, and a spot that works well for the city.
Okay. Thanks.
Did you have any more or do you want to wrap it up?
I'm sensitive to your guys' time. So, I mean, there's slides, but that's the general gist, is we're very excited to be coming and expanding to Stoughton. Like I said, construction, distribution will be starting in the spring when it gets a little warmer. Transport construction's starting now. We're going to be doing our best to notify residents, and you'll be getting our marketing in the mail in the spring. But we're very excited about it. We think it's great for Stoughton. We think it's great for TDS. We're excited about our expansions all over the country. And we, of course, will be available to come out here and answer any more questions that you guys have. But I'm sensitive to your guys' time, and I know we have other presentations. So, do you have any other questions for me tonight?
Anything you want to add, Brett or...
They've been very upfront with us about what they're doing and their intentions, and so far, so good. We've stressed to them that the restoration is key, and they appreciate that. So, essentially, the proof will be in the pudding. But we're, you know, excited to have them and work with them here in Stoughton.
All right.
Thank you, guys. Thanks for having us.
Thank you.
Thanks. All right. We'll have one more presentation, and then we'll go into communications, and we'll see if Park and Rec Director Glenn can top that one.
Okay. I thought it was a good time to come and give a little update on this project, considering in a couple of weeks, January 29th, we're going to have a public presentation at the high school. It's at 7:00 PM, and Gary Lacy is the engineer for this whitewater park aspect of it. He'll be in Stoughton that night. So, you can go to the next slide. So, I get a lot of questions when I first talk about people, what we're trying to do, and I think I'm crazy. So, this is a great video I found that's based on the Iowa whitewater parks, and it's two minutes, and I think it explains everything that they did and what it accomplished.
Turn the lights off. I'll call the city.
I don't know. I haven't had enough coffee today. I haven't had enough to bridge my dream.
I always saw this. It's beautiful. I left with a stone steel globe pole.
I don't know if I have sound. Is that going to have sound?
Muted in the video player.
Where?
Yep. I thought this was the dumbest bleep.
Picture Iowa. You probably think this, 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 some of this, but what about this?
We don't have natural whitewater. We'll build it.
Iowa, huh? Yeah, you guys got a couple of parks out there. So, we're getting around.
Iowa and the country as a whole has a dam problem.
Dams are bad because they're really dangerous. People die on them every year.
But there is a solution.
You guys have this dam. It's breaking down on you. This is what we think you should do.
And it's tear them down and replace them with whitewater parks.
There were a lot of people saying, this is nutty.
What kayakers? Where are they?
And he said, when they first brought this idea up, I thought this was the dumbest bleeping idea.
We met with about 80 people, 40 of which were fishermen with pitchforks and torches.
We're the most altered state in the United States. So, our rivers and our streams are really our last wild spaces.
What you're seeing is people coming out, building that relationship with their environment again. You get people to come back in the water and play.
It's part of a nationwide movement to remove dams, and it's bigger than just riding rapids.
This movement that's starting, that we can actually do some river restoration, some in-stream work to provide quality fish habitat, water quality improvement, and potentially a recreational opportunity turns a patch job essentially into something that's going to bring money and tourists and opportunity back into that community.
And some of those same fishermen have come up to me. They're like, well, I was one of the fishermen at that original meeting, and you're like, yeah. You know, I've actually had guys come up and say, hey, listen, I'm sorry, you know, for opposing it so strongly at the time. He says, we just didn't know, and thank you for doing it.
Go back on a nice sunny day, and there's now hundreds of people.
He said it was a transformation.
This is running. This ribbon of gold has been going through this community for centuries.
It's something that they can be proud of and that people want to go see. And if we can do that in Iowa, we can do that anywhere.
Picture Iowa. You probably think...
Okay. So, here's a quote. I talked to the Mirror Slide of Colorado about their park there, and it's basically, like you said, it's the economic hub for the region. They have giant festival that's centered around the river, and it's their city social center. So, you know, is it really a social activity? It is, because if you look at these types of parks, for every one person that's in the water, there's two people outside of the water. But it also gets, it also gets people into the area and using the park too outside of the water. So, I'm going to give a little timeline that gives the background of where we got, where we started and where we are today. So, in November 2016, there was a citizen in the community who actually came to our office and talked to former director Lynch and myself, and she said, she knew we were trying to like approve the use of the river recreationally, and she said that we really need to check out the places in Iowa that have whitewater parks. And we're like, whitewater park in Iowa? We sort of had the same reaction as the people in the video. So, over the next course of like 12 months or so, we did a lot of research and looked at them, talked to two of the leading engineers, Gary Lacy, one of them, Scott Shipley would be the other. They've built the most whitewater parks in the country. And, you know, is this something that we can do here in the rivers? Is that the capacity to do it? And both of them said yes. You know, it would be possible to do it. So, next slide. So, that pretty much, and then we also did research on like the benefits of the parks, you know, how much they've done to other communities and if this is worth, ideal worth exploring more. So, January 2018, I had a meeting with DNR officials, Waterways Director was in Stoughton, and also the Secretary Deputy for the Southern Region. And we did a site tour of the area, and, you know, I asked them, is this something that we could do in Wisconsin? And at that, I got some good feedback from them. So, at that point, you can go to the next slide, we decided to move forward with a concept plan for the park, and that's a picture of the concept plan. And May 2018, Gary Lacy came to the city, or Stoughton, and we had a presentation in the Opera House. I'm sure some of you attended. It was really well-attended by the community and the Dane County area, especially the paddlers. And I would say the lower level was mostly full. So, at that point, we had some more decision to move forward with the project, and we created a steering committee. So, between the first steering committee meeting and the end of the, or in the concept plan, so in that timeframe, I went to other organizations such as Madison Sports, Madison Area Sports, or it says, I forgot the name actually of the group, but it's the, they run Ironman and other major events at Dane County. And it's organizations like that and recruited members for the steering committees. So, the steering committee has a paddler. It's actually the city attorney. Regina's been on there since the beginning of it. We have a RDA member. We also have Rivers and Trails Task Force member that's on it. So, we have all these different aspects of stakeholder groups that are represented in the steering committee. So, they're tasked with the, with the, with moving or making the major decisions of the project. So, one of the major decisions during this timeframe was, you know, what are we going to do with the design of the park? So, before that decision was made, there was an event that's actually not on this timeline, but last summer, there was a kayaker paddling down the Harrah River who actually got pinned under, or not pinned, but sucked underneath the dam, came out, and luckily, they survived the event. But that really, I think, was always in the back of everybody's mind on the steering committee. So, when we were moving forward with the project, they decided to make a dam out design option. That was a major influencing point. But there's other benefits and things. We also had communities, community members from other places who have gone through dam removals, such as West Bend, and we had the Manchester project manager call into our meetings, and they gave us their experience with these types of designs. So, that led them to really make the dam out decision as far as the design from the concept plan. So, I think we can go to the next slide. So, here's some of like a timeline of the work that we've done this year. So, this is a picture of Interflue, who was tasked with doing the sediment sampling in the Mill Pond. The sediment sampling report came back earlier this, like September timeframe of this year, and we had a meeting with the DNR shortly thereafter, and, you know, we didn't know it was actually going to be in there. It could be like a game stopper basically for us if it was really contaminated. But the DNR says it's typical of an urban environment, and it's nothing going to set the project back. So, it's looking like that we can, the water levels will drop and that we could cap the area that's contaminated with several different things, but it's, it doesn't need to be removed from the site, which would be the big cost. With the dam out decision, also Recreation Engineering and Planning, Gary Lacy's company, did the prelim design and hydraulic analysis for it. And like I said earlier, we're going to have a public meeting on January 29th. So, this is the preliminary design of the park. So, you can see that the Mill Pond, there's a lot of area that's exposed, and that's likely to be capped. And then, there's, the dam would be modified so that you'd have a surfing wave, and there'd be a southern channel which will allow kayakers to get through. And there is enough head clearance so that normal flow is for a paddler to get underneath the bridge, and there to be two bigger, two larger features downstream of Fort Street. So, the hydraulic, back to hydraulic analysis, this is what it's saying with the design. So, we'd see a 2.9 foot water level drop at Main Street. Then, the water levels, the impact is less than further upstream you get. So, it'd be 1.3 at Forton Street, and then one foot at Skoll and Rowan, and like you said, it'd be a quarter of a foot. That is under normal water flows. The 10-year average is 380 CFS, but I think Brett can attest to this, that that's, that'd be like our bowl probably of the last few years. I think they're usually flowing much higher. So, the water impact, the drops would be less than that. And this is a depiction of what the river would look like with the design. So, upstream, up into Main Street, and the engineer is actually working on doing Main Street right now from Main Street to the Cooper Causeway Pedestrian Bridge, the railroad bridge area. So, we would know what the river would look like for the entire stretch of the city. The depths, so the darkest shade would be four feet. So, right now, it's like seven or eight feet in the Mill Pond. It would go down to four feet. The permitting, so the way that the DNR permitting and Army Corps of Engineering permitting work is that you do the permitting through the DNR here, and then they work with the Army Corps to permit the project. So, in some states, they're separate. They don't work together. So, there'd be two different permitting processes, but the DNR has told us that they, the Army Corps works through them. So, one of the things we had done too, we had economic impact analysis done for the project, and this was done by the University of Wisconsin, and we didn't pay them anything to do this. So, when the professor who worked on this, he told me he's going to be conservative with his numbers. He said, if you paid a consultant, they can make up any numbers that, you know, you'd want it to sell the project. But he goes, he's not in that business. He wants his numbers to be really solid and be actually realistic. So, what it's showing is that other whitewater parks that are, have a lot of features and they're really nice, they can get people to travel from 120 minutes away to visit them. So, the map on the right is 120, 160 and 30-minute drive time. So, the way the project is now, we believe that we could get people on the 120-minute drive. So, they've, these are some quotes, and they really, what they do is they really spur economic development. You've got a lot of tourism going on. We're downtown from visitors coming to use the park, and, you know, they're going to stop at a bar or restaurant, have a couple beers and a burger, you know, spend 30, 40 bucks, and they get a tank full of gas. And if they're staying overnight, they're going to be staying in the hotel. And I thought this was an interesting quote on the bottom from the RDA survey from the Downtown ERA Committee, and people want experiences when they visit downtown, and this is giving them an experience. So, the next few slides are just some benefits of these types of projects. So, there's some environmental benefits. So, this is Willen Mills Dam in West Bend, and they removed the dam and they created a park. So, this is the dam removal, one week after the dam removal, and then 12 years later, they have a great park in their city. So, one week, you know, it looks pretty bad. You see, it looks like a mud flat, but just looking at some several pictures that DNR has of dam removal projects, within six months, there's a lot of vegetation already growing. This is an example of a surfing wave, and like I said in the beginning, you can see there's only a few people actually using the water, and there's multiple people outside of the water watching them. And there's also, it seems like everybody has one of these parks, has a festival, you know, that goes with it. And obviously, if you're getting people outside moving, there's going to be some mental health benefits too, as well as the physical health benefits. Then, like I said about the paddler last summer going under the dam, this is a dam modification. So, the engineer wants to keep the foundation of the dam in place instead of taking it open, basically the same exact thing. It's a cost savings measure. But the top two picture graphics, the one on the right is like our dam here. The one on the left is called the low-head dam. Those are more dangerous, but there is some safety risk with having a type of dam like we had. So, if the paddler kayak would have got stuck in there, it could have been pretty bad. So, obviously, there's some other recreational things. So, we're hoping the big-term plan is to connect this to the Lower Harrah River Trail that comes into this city. The video on the left can be found on our website, and it's a video from Trote Limited on how the fish passages work and the fish habitat from these types of projects. I got these from Brett, and these are sort of, you know, a lot of people, a lot of places I've gone through dam removals do it as a cost savings measure, believe it or not. So, there's some costs associated with actually operating the dam and keeping a dam. So, we just, Brett said, Brett told me that they just had the dam inspected. It doesn't need any repairs. I don't know, is that 10 years?
Yeah, every 10 years, 10 years, because it's a low-hazard dam, we have an inspection that's done by an engineer. We just had ours done in September. So, the cost was... So the cost was, was relatively minimal for that inspection. But if there were any major repairs, those can become quite costly. Luckily, our dam is in relatively good shape. We had very minor things that we had to repair, you know, a few loose bolts and things like that. But our major cost is really our, our staff time. It's a 24/7 operation. We monitor it constantly and make adjustments as, as needed, whatever time they're needed. So our costs are about, you know, just, just shy of $9,000 to operate the dam with our staff.
And the last, the last time the dam was repaired was roughly $500,000 to repair the dam. So here's, here's some of the next steps that we need to do for the, the project. So their title search for like the exposed area in the Mill Pond, to see who actually owns that piece of property. Sometimes it's the dam owner, sometimes it's the adjacent property owner. Either way, it would be in a floodplain, you wouldn't really be able to do anything with that land. You could put a trail in there or something, but you're not going to be able to put actually a building or something there. We'd have to do restoration remediation plans, the final design. The, the trail design and the engineering for the RDA property is really going to be driven by the stormwater, by the developer. Fundraising for the project, and if we were going to have a rental operation for the park. So, one thing I didn't mention is it's, these things are, these parks are completely free to use because it's the waters of the public. So you can't charge to actually use a river, it's an in-stream. It's not creating an artificial channel like Wausau is. But other places recoup a lot of the expense through a rental operation, either contracted out or run by the actual municipality. So you can find a lot of this information. I updated the project's website, it's stoughtonrec.com/riverpark. And there's a lot of different videos, a lot of different documents. That's the link. Otherwise, you can always email or call me. Also, if you wanted a, the Mayor Salita too gave me his personal cellphone number, and if anybody had any questions about their park and what it's done for their community, he's had to give it out. So I didn't want to post it in a public meeting, but so, but he's, he's a, he's a business owner too, it's what he did before he actually became mayor there. So, I mean, if, I think he was pretty integral and actual the building of the park there.
Any questions for Dan? Alderperson Riley, and then Borsma.
Thank you, Mayor. One, thank you for all this work, Dan. Two, I'm really excited about this. I think that this is really important, I hope we get this done. Having said that, I thought, during our meeting, there was discussion with respect to where we are on the dam, the cost of that, if the, what we have to do vis-à-vis the DNR. Could you get into that just a little bit? Am I, you know what I'm, with respect to adjust, et cetera?
So there's a municipal dam program for dam removals. The DNR is considering this a dam modification, not a dam removal, because we're trying to keep the foundation as a cost-saving measure for the surfing wave. The mayor and I have a meeting with our local state representative to see if we could change some things. And then the city attorney's looking at the administrative code that the DNR referenced in their judgment.
Thanks.
Dan, what are, what are the implications for the canoe race on Saturday?
Faster, yeah.
Better race?
Well, the general sentiment, I mean, Rivers and Trails Task Force, Dory Dean who runs the canoe race, she's part of the Rivers and Trails Task Force, and we've talked about the project there, and Bob Diaboll's canoe racer. And they, I think they both think it's going to be a little bit of highlight, maybe you could finish the race under your pedestrian bridge instead of where it ends now. So quicker. It'd be a little quicker, yeah.
You end with a bang.
A little bit of excitement at the end, I don't know.
I mean, it's a sacred invention, and Stoughton, that's why it raises.
Well, we thought about that, and we discussed it. And when we had, actually, the people that organized it, and Bob Diaboll, he said, "No, it's actually going to be a lot more fun, and people are going to actually," because you end up at the end being a little bit challenged and a lot more fun. People are really going to come out and watch them go through the rapids, and when they end it, it's actually going to be probably a better event.
Any other questions? Otherwise, Dan's always available if something comes up.
So I didn't, one thing I didn't touch upon was the Man Park Master Plan. So there's a draft preferable plan on our website, just our regular main page, stoughtonrec.com. You can review it, and you can, there's a survey you can take to give additional feedback. So if you'd like to do that. So the consultant working on it has, there's been some coordination as far as with this project and the Man Park. So there's some access points in Man Park to get to the river.
Okay, thank you. All right. Do we have any communications from Alders this evening? Alderperson Lagaki?
Just a quick one about community affairs and council policy. You might've read in our minutes that we're just trying to be a starting point, a clearinghouse, an area for when air, issues of sustainability and energy targets and like are on the forefront or part of agendas. We've now sort of organized that as a part of our work of that group. Who knows if it'll stay at community affairs and council policy? But the reality of climate change and everything that's going on, we thought we should have it sitting at a place of our local government. So I wanted to make you guys aware that that's a increased focus of the work of that committee.
Okay, thank you. Alderperson Caravelo?
I just want to mention, I'm sure most of you are aware, but tomorrow night at 7:00 PM, Dane County Parks is having a informational meeting at the Pleasant Springs Town Hall on County Highway N regarding the next piece of the Lower Harrah River Trail, which will connect, I think, the end of Williams Drive and the State Park over to Fish Camp Park on the north side of the lake. So that's tomorrow night at 7:00.
Thank you. Any other communications? I have a quick one. There's a 100th anniversary at the Mother Post, and that would be the Stoughton VFW. And that is this Saturday. The festivities begin at 4:00 with an open house. There will be a ceremony at 5:00, live music, and all sorts of fun. So if anybody's available, I'm sure they'd love to see you out there. I know I'll be there. Anybody else have any communications? All right, we'll get into some business here. There's a proclamation for Sons of Norway in the packet, and we'll get into, minutes and reports are in the packet. It takes us to public comment. We do have one person signed up for public comment, and that would be Crystal Welsh. Come on up.
Hi.
Hi, how you doing?
Good, how are you?
Have to adjust that mic a little bit.
Okay.
There you go.
I'm Crystal Welsh. I am currently the president of the Taste of Stoughton, which hopefully you guys had a little bit of pre-information on. I'm just here to talk about it briefly and answer any questions quickly. The main purpose of this event is, last year, we started and we paired this up with the Madisonary Builders Association, which I'm on their board of directors, I'm also on their parade homes committee. So we paired up with them. We had a huge success rate as far as the highest attendance parade homes. It was over, it was close to 70% higher than any other like top attendance number because of the Taste of Stoughton. So, we branched off of MABA, MABA, because they are not doing a parade site this year. So, we got a committee together, and basically, it's just to showcase local Stoughton restaurants to Stoughton and surrounding communities. We had two bands last year. This year, we will have three bands, 11 to 8:00 PM. We have a completely fenced-off area, about 1,200 linear feet of fencing. We've got ID checks provided by, I've been in contact with Teresa Pellet from the Stoughton Wellness Coalition. So we went through, obviously, the Public Safety Committee meeting. We have plenty of staff that we're going to have the day of, volunteers the day of. We are currently a 501(c)(3) status pending for approval. So we got all that paperwork in before the end of the year. We're looking to have food vendors. We've had such great support from the local restaurants. We had 10 vendors last year, and we've already had a handful reach back out to us, including ones that couldn't make that one-month deadline that I pulled it, we pulled it all together in a month last year. So this year, we've been, we've been planning, I think, May, you know, this last May. So definitely a lot more time, even considering non-food vendors, to be a part of this event as well. So, obviously, we are having a Nordic Ridge Park this year is kind of our destination. So you have the splash pad there, there is possibility we might have a bounce house. But the park is supposed to be completed by the time of this event in June. That's what we're told by Bob. So just, it's going to be family-friendly. We want people to come with blankets, chairs, and really just enjoy the community together with local vendors and, like I said, surrounding communities. We're working with all local people, so we have a local, you know, our insurance bank, and we've got a lot of stuff in line. So, I'm just really excited. I moved here in 2008, and I haven't left. So I just love Stoughton. I grew up in Mineral Point, it reminds me of Mineral Point. So I love, this is a great city, and I want more people to kind of know about it. So, any questions?
Thank you. It's great.
Excellent. Thank you. We'll be talking about this.
June 20th, sorry.
Yep, we'll be talking about this shortly. All right.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, anybody else wish to speak at public comment tonight? Seeing none, we'll go into the consent agenda. There's three items in there, entertain a motion, move to approve. Motion by Jensen, is there a second?
Second.
Second by Alderperson Bartlett, would anybody like anything removed from the consent agenda? Hearing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? None opposed, that's approved. I'd like to just skip to new business for a couple items quickly, and then we'll go back. R3 of 2020 is, is a recommendation for the Taste of Stoughton, and that comes from Public Safety. Alderperson Jensen?
Thank you, Your Honor. Public Safety presents Resolution 3, 2020, authorizing and directing improper city officials to approve a temporary Class B beer and Class B wine retail license, a special event license for Taste of Stoughton, and I would move for approval.
Second.
Motion by second, and a second by Bartlett. Is there any discussion? Alderperson Jensen?
As well, you're the presentation here, and the public comment. The chief is not here, but we did not have any, any issues from the previous Taste of Stoughton, so everything was in order, so.
Biggest problem last year was really windy that day.
Yeah, that's true.
Alderperson Borsma?
Yeah, once again, I, this, this will be involving, I'm sure, kids, and being available during, you know, during the sale of beer and wine. So I will be voting no on this.
Okay, thank you.
I think, I think the culture of our city is, is changing into more and more having fun by the use of alcohol, and I think it's something that we have to be careful with.
All right, thank you. Any other questions or comments? Hearing none, all in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
And any opposed?
No.
In that motion carries. We'll go to the next item, which is R4 of 2020, and that also comes from Public Safety. Alderperson Jensen?
Thank you, Your Honor. Public Safety presents Resolution 4, 2020, authorizing and directing improper city officials to issue a Class B fermented malt beverage license and a Class B intoxicated liquor license for Tailgaters of Stoughton LLC. Chad Struzel, agent, doing business as Tailgaters of Stoughton located at 151 East Main Street, and I move for approval.
Second.
Second by Alderperson Riley, Alderperson Jensen?
Yeah, change of ownership, so there needs to be a change of the agent.
Any questions or comments on this one?
I just, just let everybody know that I'll be abstaining on this.
Okay. All right, any other questions or comments from Alders?
What was the difference in the, you had a 4-0 vote on that one, but on the same day on the one above it, you had a 5-0 vote? What's that?
I think there was a member that was late to the meeting, so they didn't vote on it.
That was me.
Sorry to call you out on.
It was work. It was work, honest.
We accused her, so she showed up. She got caught in traffic or something. All right, all in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
I abstain.
And one abstention, okay, thank you. Thanks for waiting tonight. Hopefully, you enjoyed the presentations.
Yeah, all right.
Take care. We're going to go back to old business then. We have a second reading, reading of Ordinance 27 of 2019. That comes from Public Works, Alderperson Bartlett?
Ordinance 27 of 2019, repealing or recreating the section 58-6 and 58-8, creating sections 58-12 and 58-13, the City of Stoughton Municipal Code relating to public nuisances, and I move to approve.
Second.
Second by Alderperson, was it Reeves?
Yeah.
Okay. Alderperson Bartlett?
I would turn this over to Public Works Director to explain this a little more.
Yeah, between myself and, and Matt. So essentially, when it comes to trees on private property, our current ordinance really does not offer us much language in how we are to go about handling those situations. So our current ordinance essentially states that trees which are a menace to the public safety, or are the cause of substantial annoyance to the public, are a nuisance. So that's up to interpretation. It really gives us no guidance in how we treat trees on private property. So we worked with, with Matt and his firm, I come up with language that offers us some protection and some guidance on how we treat those situations. So basically, Jaimon, I don't know if you queued it up or not, but I have a short presentation, another presentation, on kind of where we're at with, with the process and how we, we treat these things. When it comes to noxious weeds, that's another part of this. I'm not sure if Rodney can speak to that after, after this. But what we're looking at is how we deal with the tree aspect of it. So 58-12 is essentially in addition to the ordinance. So that deals with disease-infested or dangerous trees or other plantings that are a nuisance. Next slide, please. So basically, this is broken down into disease-infested trees, or dangerous trees as defined in section 58-12(c), which is in your packet, or other plantings. So I made these different colors because they are different in how we would treat them or go about acting upon these situations, and I'll get into that in the next slide. But essentially, you could read this for yourself, but essentially, if there's a tree that is diseased, or may be dangerous, there's a definition in the ordinance about dangerous tree, which basically, if it can fall, or may fall on city property, public property, is deemed a dangerous tree. So this is basically how we'd go about, if a notification was brought to our attention about a tree on private property, we would determine first if it was diseased or infested, then we would be able to take some action to prevent the further spread of disease in our urban forest. If it was a dangerous tree as defined in the ordinance, and may fall on public property, so any public rights of way, park, a public building, sidewalk, street, things of that nature, we would be able to take action. If a tree was, was simply dead on private property but posed no threat to the public, we would be, we would not take any action. The biggest thing that we talked about with our council is, legal counsel, that is, is entry onto private property. We have, we had some reservations about doing so, the castle doctrine, things like that. So I'm not going to put a flak jacket on, but, you know, we, we respect private property as well. And so the discussion was, how far as municipality do we take, take the ordinance to disenter onto private property? I'm not sure if you want to speak to that, Matt, or not, or if I kind of covered it?
I think you covered it well. I mean, I'd be happy to answer questions, but.
Okay. We took that, that aspect very seriously about going onto private property.
Was that like a Fourth Amendment thing? Is that what that is?
There are certainly Fourth Amendment issues in terms of, you know, we, we can't just go onto people's private property without addressing Fourth Amendment issues. So we, we provided some guidance to the city on. So we, we provided some guidance to the city on how to do that as well.
Because a lot of these things are residents calling on their neighbors because there's a, a tree that's, that's dead and they want it gone, and they want the city to play, you know, the mitigator to get that, that done. And we don't feel comfortable essentially, in a civil matter, being that, that mitigator. Next slide, please. So just, just an example, you know, Dutch elm disease, if it's, you know, there's a disease that may spread to other trees, we can take action. This is just an example of, of one of those diseases, which is Dutch elm disease. EAB is, is obviously a thing that's here and is kind of gone. So we would treat, EAB is, it's not really an imminent threat at this point. It's already, the wave is already here and gone, whereas Dutch elm, that can spread more readily. And we rely on our, our city forester to make those assessments. We do have a tree risk assessment that he would do on each one of these complaints and then use that as a guideline moving forward. Next slide, please. Dangerous tree, which is the other aspect of this, so if it's a dead tree, it's likely to fall upon a sidewalk, street, or other public property, just to protect the, the public, we would be able to take action in that regard. Evaluation of the tree on private property, as I stated before, we'd use the basic tree risk assessment form. This is a process that was developed by the International Society of Boraculture, so it's not something that we made up. This is a vetted-out form because we don't want to be in the business of playing favorites. We want a form that we can arbit, not arbitrarily, but, but systematically go through the, the analysis of that tree without any bias. When it comes to the abatement, if we went down the path of, we determined that there was a disease that we did not want to spread, or it was a dangerous tree that affected public property, we would notify the property owner in writing. We would require that removal no less than 14 days. So we would determine how long essentially we would give the property owner to remove that tree. We would make every effort to work with the property owner on a proper timeline that we feel comfortable with. Some are more, they need to be removed quicker than others possibly, but we work with, with them. And also I want to say it's not just removal. It could be the removal of a, a branch or other abatement options, which could be some sort of treatment. So it's not always just removal. If, if notices ignored, which we, we, this is what we don't want to do, the city shall cause the abatement of the nuisance. Essentially, all charges against, would be against the real estate as a special charge. And that process can be lengthy. We'd rather work with the property owner to get the, the nuisance abated, but it's, we do have options when it comes to that, if they were to ignore our, our wishes. The property owner may appeal to the circuit court, essentially placing a restraining order on the, on the city until it goes to the court process. So that is an option that they'd have, and I think that was vetted out through our, our council. Is it the last slide? Any questions on, on this?
Alder Person Riley, go ahead.
Thank you. Is this all related to trees solely, this, this whole new rewriting of this ordinance?
So this, the section I just spoke to, 5812, has to do with trees or shrubs. I know there's another section about noxious weeds.
Right. The 58 six, I'm just looking, I'm just curious about the language. Order of being inspected, the officer determines that a public nuisance exists within the city and that there is imminent danger to the public health, safety, peace, morals, or decency. I'm trying to figure out what peace, morals, or decency has to do with trees. I'm wondering if it's like in The Wizard of Oz, where those trees get angry that they're insulting the apple and they start whipping them at the, or what.
Attorney Dragney has a response.
So, no, it's not all just about trees. We actually made some revisions to 58 six, which is the nuisance abatement provisions in the ordinance, and we, we modified those to make sure that they comport with some due process requirements. So I don't think we tinkered with the morals language.
Who's, who's morals are you referring to?
It's a good question. I hadn't, I didn't really focus on that. If you want me to dig into that, I can, but let's get this done and then we can come back to the morals issue, if you'd like.
Well, it's that whole, I, I, because I, that just, it's a weird language.
Yeah, let's see, where, where are you reading?
It's under one, C1.
C1.
Non-summarary abatement by city.
Also B1.
Mm-mm. Yep. And by the way, I'm perfectly okay with your, the tree stuff.
Yeah, the tree stuff was cool.
Brett, we're, we're looking for that. Is, is this additional on trees? Is it additional?
It's, 5812 is an additional, an add-on to that ordinance, just to shore up.
Section three. So the prior sections before 5812 have to do with trees and all living beings, whereas section 12 is just speaking for the trees.
And shrubs.
And noxious weeds.
So noxious weeds is a separate.
So section 5812 is not applicable to humans?
Correct.
Okay.
You can't just abate them.
Well, we have, we have to go through the human to have it abated, yes, but it's trees or shrubs.
Yeah, and, and I certainly would be open to, I mean, if, if there's a desire to strike the reference to morals or decency, which is language that appears in a couple of places in 58 six, I would have no concern with deleting those references. I think they, I think it's kind of archaic language that's been there probably for 50 years or so.
Would, would we need to do that through an amendment or?
All right. Well, right now, there's no motion pending, but let's say we get a motion to approve the ordinance, there could then be a motion to amend that motion to strike the morals and decency language.
Yeah, we do have a motion.
Oh, we do?
Yeah.
Oh, so there could be a, a proposed amendment to strike that language?
I so moved. I would do a motion to, to strike that as stated just now by our city attorney.
Okay. A second by Hiley. Okay. Any discussion on the, on the morals of the amendment? Okay.
No.
Here, go ahead.
I have another, with respect to noxious weeds, I was just wondering, you list like three of them, and I was just wondering if you could also put in there Japanese knotweed, because that's one that I think I meant to get back to Rodney about what is along our riverbed.
Yeah.
And if we're going to take down that dam and expose a lot more soil, I would like that to be eradicated before that spreads throughout our whole nice new riverbank.
Is that already defined by the Wisconsin Department of?
I believe so.
So if it is, it would be covered under this.
I know, but it would be.
This is on private property here, isn't it?
It's private property. They both, right?
As far as noxious weeds go, I mean, we want to be good stewards of the land too, so I think we would follow our own ordinance.
It's on the, the federal list, and I'm sure it's on the state list if it's on the federal list.
So I'm open to that, as long as you give me the Latin name as well, because all the other ones have the Latin. Oh my gosh, I can't say that. Re-nutria japonica.
So are we?
We have the amendment.
Yeah. Do you want to, can we just add that to that amendment, or do we need a?
Yeah, I would.
Do you want to include that?
I would, I would, I guess withdraw my amendment and then restate my amendment.
Okay.
To, for the first part of it, and then also to designate, what was it?
To remove morals of decency and to add re-nutria japonica.
Okay.
Okay.
Ben's got to withdraw his second on that amendment.
Could you, could Holly re, re, reread that?
Are you willing to re-second it, though? Okay.
I can't see that.
There's a motion.
Japanese knotweed.
There's a motion to amend to remove the, the morals.
The morals and decency and to add the Japanese knotweed to the noxious weeds.
Let the record show that Alder Borisma is against morals and decency.
Which I thought was interesting.
The moral part, I guess.
Still believes in peace, though.
Yeah. We had a second from Alder Person Hiley on that. Any more discussion on the amendment? All right. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? None opposed. That carries, it takes us back to the original motion as amended. Is there any more discussion? Alder Person Borisma.
I just had one question of, of Brett, and that is, so it says a lot about 14 days that we get, you know, we give up to 14 days for the, in, in an emergency situation, we still can, we still can deal with it right away, right?
There's a summary abatement procedure that allows us, if there's an imminent danger to public health, safe peace, safety, peace, and no longer morals of decency, then the officer may, without notice or hearing, issue an order requiring immediate action be taken. And, and if there's a failure to comply immediately, then the city can, can move forward. That's if there's an imminent risk of danger. The other procedures are, if there's not an imminent risk, then that's where we have time, where we provide time.
I just want to reiterate, we want to work with any property owner to get that abated. I know there's a, a cost to that, in, in some cases, a hefty cost, so we want to make every effort to work with them to, to get that nuisance abated.
Yeah, as opposed to that one.
All right. Any other questions or comments? All right. All in favor of the motion as amended, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? None opposed? That carries. Good thing we have a new system in this year's budget. All right. We're going to skip down.
Only because we remove morals out of that, that's why.
Lightning's about to strike.
We're going to jump down to item number 11. We have one more person waiting here. Resolution seven of 2020, and that one comes from the.
All right, I get it.
Comes from the Plan Commission. So Alder Person Caravelo, can you introduce that one?
I can. This is Resolution seven of 2020, approving a conditional use permit request by Jeb McMahon for a two-flat use at 616 Ridge Street. And I.
Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Alder Person Bartlett. Alder Person Caravelo.
Uh, this is essentially approving the two-flat use or returning this property, I think, to, to flat use on Ridge Street. It meets with our requirements and ordinances, and at the public hearing at. There were a few neighbors. Couple of them had concerns about possible negative effects on the neighborhood, but one of them that was there, that's been living in the neighborhood for quite a while, stated that when it was previously used as a two-flat, there were absolutely no problem, so seems good.
Any questions or comments on this one? Alder Person Reeves.
I just had a question on the application, the address. I don't think the city's listed. I wondered about that, and also is just curious if this is going to be flipped, or is the person that's renovating it going to continue to own it and rent it out? I'm just curious about the plan.
Jeb's here. Do you want to come up and speak to it? You can introduce yourself if you'd like.
Hello. My name is Jeb McMahon. As far as to address the question, as far as it's going to be flipped or whatever, it's an investment property for me. So depending on people, the timeframe it's going to take to get that to be in its best value, then I will look to remove it from my portfolio, but that might take six months, it might take five years, I don't know. You know, as far as the work needs to be done, we're still working on getting the heating system up and running and some other issues there, before we even get into all the cosmetic things for that property.
And on the application, I think it had a street address, but not the city. Where, where are you from? Or where are you, where's your business out of?
My hometown is Orfordville.
Alder Person Hirsch, did you ever hand up before?
Well, I have a question for the landowner that isn't related to this.
Oh.
It's just.
Okay.
It's, it'd probably be improper for me to bring it up at this time.
Okay. Then we'll go to Alder Person Riley.
Thank you. Just out of curiosity, what, how many bedrooms in each unit? I presume it would be rent, obviously rental property, at least initially, once you finish your work, correct?
Yes.
And how many units in each, in each flat? It's bedrooms, I should say, not units, forgive me.
Bedrooms. They're both one-bedroom units.
Okay. All right. Thank you.
Alder Person Reeves.
Just a couple of comments that were in the memo. I think it might have been from, yes, Mr. Stacy, that I actually thought, I think was a little misleading, because it said there were no objections, but actually there were. And I've had a few calls, because it's in my backyard, more or less. So I've had some calls, it's in my district. I also think that his assessment that not many are reverting back to single-family, because if you look at 3A, you know, in general, that's what we like to see in the historic districts, is reversion back to single-family. Mine was reverted back to a single-family. A lot of the people in the city have reverted it back, so I think that's misleading. So because I've had complaints, I'm going to vote no.
Any other questions or comments? Alder Person Borisma.
I, I'm reading it quickly again, but when was it previously the, the two-flat?
I, I'm not sure.
Go ahead, Rodney.
If I can just clarify, Mr. Stacy's review letter was conducted or provided prior to the Plan Commission public hearing, so the, the minutes from the public hearing or the, the objection by the, the one resident was a result of that meeting. We had not been aware of any prior concerns about the property prior to the letter being, the staff review letter being created.
Could I ask my question? So when, do you know when it was previously a two-flat?
Well, I think it's actually got two kitchens in it, actually.
Yeah, it's, it's a full.
So it's, it just had not been utilized as a two-flat for over a period of one year, so it lost its conforming standard to allow that to be continued, therefore the need to go back through the conditional use process.
Alder Person Hirsch.
I guess, Rodney, could you clarify? So it was always a two-flat, and then somebody acquired it. Did they live it as a, a single-family and now going back to a two-flat? Or was it just vacant for a year?
I only know that it was vacant for more than a year.
Okay, so it's always been a two-flat, and then?
I can't say it was always, but I know that there was a two kitchens in the, in the facility for a period of time prior to his application.
If I can, in the comments from the Plan Commission meeting, a neighbor that lives up the street stated that property was used for four to six years as a two-flat until maybe the previous owner used the property as a single-family home. So, but if you look at the, the photographs that are supplied from the front of the house, it looks like it's a two-flat. That could be used as a single-family home, or I guess vice versa.
Any other questions or comments? Alder Person Lagaki.
I need to abstain on this vote.
Okay. Anybody else? Hearing none, all in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
And those opposed?
No.
And abstentions?
Me.
Okay. So that motion carries? Thank you. We'll go back to item number eight, which is our five of 2020, and this. Okay, so that motion carries? We'll go back to item number eight, which is our five of 2020, and this is coming from the plant commission. Alder Person Caravelo?
This is resolution five of 2020, resolution by the common council of the city of Stoughton, conditionally approving the preliminary plat of the Meadows at Kettle Park West. Plant commission approved five to zero, and I'm going to hand this to Rodney when he gets back trying to figure out what that noise is.
Are you gonna make a motion, or?
And I so move, yes, I will make a motion.
Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Alder Person Healy, and then let us know when you're ready.
Well, I'll verbally talk to it, and hopefully be able to get a graphic up on the screen, but it's contained in your packet. It is the preliminary plat image related to this, this project. You'll recall, it's essentially the extension of Jackson Street, Oak Opening Drive, and kind of the core center portion of the Kettle Park West development area that includes the small lot, single-family, that's been talked about and conveyed to the plant commission and the council over the last several months. The preliminary plat approval letter, or preliminary plat resolution outlines conditions that would have to be satisfied, would have to be satisfied when they bring back the final plat. So this is the preliminary plat. The next step would be to satisfy the conditions of the preliminary plat resolution, and bring back the final plat and the associated documents satisfying those conditions for action on the final plat. If the final plat is brought back in substantial compliance with the preliminary plat, it would afford the approval of a final plat action as well. You'll recognize in the resolution a number of conditions, several of them relate to specific design considerations related to setbacks, the zoning that's anticipated as part of it, a homeowners association requirements for maintenance of the private alleys, and that, those areas as identified as a condition as well. We can walk through all of them, but those, those are the highlights of some of the conditions found within the resolution in your packet.
Alder Person Hirsch?
I guess I'd like to amend the resolution to include what we had discussed in our November 26 meeting, even though that was in respects to TIF, but I think it would be also a good place to have this here, where we said that no lot south of the street, that is located south of Jackson Street, could be sold until Oak Opening Drive is extended to 138 or near 138, if the intersection is not complete. I mean, this is something, this is from our minutes from that meeting, I guess, I was wondering if this could be added to this.
I think city attorney and I can talk about that slightly, but one of the conditions, major conditions required a development agreement to be put in place. We would have anticipated that to be language contained within the development agreement. Matt, do you have any opinions about whether it's included as one of the conditions on the preliminary plat?
I'm, I'm trying to find my draft of the preliminary plat resolution, see if we put that in the.
In the packet.
Is it?
I'd love to put it on the screen for you.
We all put earplugs in?
Take care of the volume somehow, I don't know what's going on. No, I have it, I'm, I can't, I have it on my screen, I can't get it up there.
Technology is a wonderful thing.
We did it in both machines.
Well, we're looking that up. Is there any other questions? Alder Person Borisma?
I was at finance just, just before city council, and I did raise an issue at finance, and that is, this is called, it's a Meadows, I think.
It's a Meadows at Kettle Park West.
Kettle Park West. There is a Stoughton Meadows Assisted Living Facility right down the street from it. I don't know if there's any implications whatsoever for the naming of this project, but I just wanted people to be aware that we do have another Meadows right on Jackson Street, so.
So you're talking about the building?
The building, well, yeah, the facility is called the Stoughton Meadows Assisted Living Facility. That's what it's, that's, as I, as far as I know, the name of it. So we have, we have the Meadows facility right down the street from the new Meadows and Kettle Park. I, I raised it just as a concern, whether or not the Meadows Assisted Living, folks are gonna have any trouble with the naming of this project, I don't know, but I, I did want to raise it with.
Okay.
To let people know about it.
Director Shil.
And I did, I did pass it on, I did pass it on to Dennis Stankros from Org Development.
I would suggest that the plat name generally isn't an identifying feature, other than maybe a landmark at the entrance to some subdivisions. That's not to say your lot isn't, your lot would be named based on the plat name. We are particularly in tune with the address names, so that it, emergency responses within our fire and EMS districts, so we've, we've made some comments related to Aspen, for example. Aspen is another street name that's within our rural district, but within our fire department district, so those types of naming conventions we frown upon. I don't know that the one that you're raising, related to the plat name and a building name, raises the same level of, at least, emergency response concern that we, we focus on.
All right, did, do you have an answer?
Yes, I do. So the approach to the issue you've identified, that, that we're taking is to require that that be addressed through the development agreement. Approval of a development agreement is a condition of the resolution that is before you tonight, so when that development agreement comes back to the council, you'll be able to review that and determine whether that issue's been addressed to your satisfaction, but we, you may recall that chart that we put up, where we went through the development agreement related issues, and, and I have an outline of the development agreement on my system. That specific language is, is included in our, in our outline of what we want to see in that agreement. So that's how we're intending to enforce that requirement.
So you don't think it's appropriate to also put it here, just so it's in multiple places to ensure that it's captured?
If we put it there, the only thing I would do is modify the language that says that there has to be development agreement, to say that development agreement has to include, among other things, that specific requirement.
Okay.
So we could do that, if you wanted, but that's the status of it.
No, I guess I'd feel comfortable with that being in there, just so it's captured, you know?
So we would have to amend this.
So we'd have to amend the resolution, I believe it's the first paragraph that requires the development agreement. If you want to.
A developer agreement that includes.
Among other things, a requirement that no lots located south of.
And I think the road now is actually named Alpine Run. I mean, for some reason, I think we're in Colorado, as opposed to Wisconsin, with this new development, but it's not. I know, but the, the crossroad is older.
Rodney, I want to make sure we get this right, in terms of how we're defining the area, because as I recall, there was some, when we had the map up, we were, we wanted to be careful about making sure we were clear at what lots we're talking about.
The lots were all.
Be able to put it up? Put it up on the screen.
Yeah. How many cords you got over there, anyway?
None that work.
Can you do like, like a, a modern dance?
You're like a Marcel Marceau.
So basically, we would make a motion and copy and paste the language that we had.
Although I want to just make sure.
Set aside for the developers' agreement.
Just want to make sure the language is right.
Okay. Any other questions while we're?
It is Alpine Run.
Yeah, but if he changes the road, I mean, if he changes the name, I don't know, that's gonna be changed.
A little duct tape?
Well, Alpine Run might work better than the as-yet unnamed road.
Yes, that's true.
Which I think is what we called it before. That was the as-yet unnamed road that was south of Jackson Street.
So, the intention of that motion was, in the past, to no, no lot south of this road extended, so from this Alpine Run, Oak Opening Road, Oak Opening Drive is here, Alpine Run points to the south of that. I think there's a public.
No lots south of Alpine Run extended.
That's how we understood it.
Yeah, so block three and block two could not be, well.
Well, block, block three is, my interpretation, the one lot in the corner of block three would be developable.
It's below.
Block, this is block two.
Yeah, but block three, all of block three is south of Alpine Run.
It fronts on Alpine Run.
Yeah.
There's no access to Alpine Run. Do you want that one to be allowed to be developed? It's gonna have public improvements on the front at this point, in a driveway that would come off of Alpine Run. It wasn't clear in the last motion, so are you suggesting this one should not be a developable lot?
Yeah, everything like block three and, and below.
Oh, you're saying entire block three?
Yeah, because that's all south of, of Alpine Run, which is why I'm understanding, because originally, we had it south of Jackson, and we compromised to Alpine Run.
Yeah, and I was trying to convey what I understood to be the message on Oak Opening Drive. I did not understand any of these lots.
Because the original motion was anything south of Jackson, and then we kept on compromising to the Alpine Run south.
I think somebody should just make a motion so we clarify, because I don't think it was clear, and I'd have my somebody blocks and the like. Otherwise, what would happen is they'd develop this, these streets, and you wouldn't, you wouldn't allow these homes to be constructed on these, whereas here, if you terminated public improvements, for example, you then wouldn't have any frontages here. I'm, I'm just asking the question, so that there's.
If I could, you know, the, so the, the issue that led to this condition, as I recall, was a concern that Oak Opening Drive wouldn't be completed all the way down to 138.
Right.
So you could have kind of that area, what, what's shown as block two, south of Alpine Run, you could have that area sitting undeveloped without Oak Opening Drive being extended.
Well, it was like, the original that we had come up with back two years ago was anything below Jackson, but now they've revamped this thing, and we compromise as a council, because we want to give them enough investment money, or, you know, money, to be able to build the extension to 138. We, we compromise to, instead of, south of Jackson, which would have been block, you know, five, six, two, and three, we compromise it as block three and the lower half of block two.
Well, I, I guess the only thing I would say is that block three area, the, if, if all of the public improvements are installed on Alpine Run, and those lots are fully served by street, water, sewer, and so on, it's an onerous requirement to say you can't sell those lots, in my mind, without really.
But it's a public, the whole thing, it's a public safety issue of not extending it to 138. This is the whole argument, is that the more houses, and the more you build up, the, the bigger the problem is with public safety and access into that, and that's why we as a group compromised for Alpine Drive. Before that, it was Jackson, anything south of Jackson, so I still think that we did, you know, it was a nice kind of group work together to compromise on that, because the consensus is, is that we really want that Oak Opening to go down to 138 for public safety issues, and if you're just saying, oh, well, we can just, doesn't mean that they can never develop that, they just have to extend the road. If we keep on compromising it, then we've lost our public safety issues, and I will not agree to that, and that's what our whole TIF is based on, one of the big things, and I will never go for that, because this is what we had decided on.
Okay, Alder Person Jensen?
Yeah, I just wanted to say that, that, my understanding was not like that at all. My understanding was that it was from here down three was included. Was not included, yeah, so it was just the score half of, of block two, that's what my understanding was, and that's why I voted for it.
Alder Person Riley?
Thank you, there. Was one of the concerns, if I recall that whole discussion, that Alder Person Hirsch and perhaps Alder Person Mayuski had, was as if we only did it to the block two that we're talking about right now, they might say, well, we don't really need that to make our money, so drop that. Wasn't that one of the concerns that you had?
Yep.
Okay. I mean, I don't remember distinctly, honestly, if block three was included or not, expressing our discussions.
We didn't have, we didn't have street names back then, and blocks back then, it was just kind of.
We didn't have Colorado and Stoughton at that time.
No.
Yeah, no, I know, so that's why I don't remember that part of the block three, do I did it, but I seem to recall a discussion that if we only limited to the block two that we're talking about now, there may not be sufficient impetus on the part of the developer to extend that road. They'll just abandon and say to heck with it, right? Okay, thanks.
Alder Person Lagaki?
Question for Alder, Alder Hirsch, was this meeting that you're speaking of at a council meeting, or at a particular planning commission?
It was November 26th.
It was our, it was our November 26th.
Yeah, it was at the council.
So it was, it was in the, it was in our contract, all of those details.
Yep, it's in our December 10th.
I think we can read out the minutes, that's what I was trying to get at.
Yep, that's what I wrote to them. Back then, we did not have a street name. All we said was a street south of Jackson.
How it says exactly is, no lot south of the street that is located south of Jackson Street could be sold until Oak Opening Drive is extended to 138 or near 138, if the intersection is not complete.
So where we were headed with this was a motion to amend the resolution, and specifically the, you have the resolution up there.
Clarification on what you read? So that was, that's where I was confused as to which meeting. There isn't a negotiation for below Alpine, it's stated below Jackson. Is that what I just heard?
It's the street.
But Alpine is below Jackson, is what.
South of the street, south of Jackson Street, which is now named Alpine.
Okay.
It was never named last year.
So it is the, it is the area that is south.
Here's Jackson here.
Yes. So it's everything south of Alpine.
Yeah, that's.
This is what.
Yeah, it's pretty straightforward. So it's, it's block three in that half, that southern tier of block two.
Well, then we need to be very clear about, the block two area is a little confusing about exactly.
Well, because Alpine comes, well, it looked like it comes through the center of that.
I don't think it goes through block two. Alpine terminates that. So the, right now, the first paragraph of the resolution requires a development agreement, and the last sentence of the resolution of that paragraph right now says, "The development agreement shall also address responsibility for maintaining stormwater management infrastructure." So it's a good, question is, do you want to include an additional provision relating to this issue, and if so, what exactly do you want it to say?
Well, was there other provisions in the, well, this is the main one, that based on what we just, it's in our minutes from November 26, and now the unnamed southern street is called Alpine, and I guess it has to be, you know, extended. And I guess it has to be, you know, extended, Alpine extended through Block Two, which would be on that, what is it? I don't know what nine fifteen and nine ten actually mean on there, but those lots that correspond to that.
Those are parking lots that are within, included within those.
There's probably lot numbers coming up here.
Right here is your intersection with Alpine. Alpine intersects Oak Opening right here. This is part of the alley area.
Yep, so I think we said below that alley.
Right.
Below the alley, okay. What's the name of that street, Aspen?
Alpine Run is the new name.
Alpine Run, and then the alley across from- So, Alder Hirsch, would you like me to read a sentence that I think you're shooting for, and then you can tell me if you think I got it right?
Sure.
Okay. So, it would be a motion to add the following to the end of paragraph one of the resolution. Development agreement shall provide that no lots located south of Alpine Run, or south of the alley extending across from Alpine Run, may be sold or conveyed until Oak Opening Drive is constructed either to the intersection with 138, if that intersection is ready for the connection, or to the southerly boundary of the plat, if the 138 intersection is not yet ready for the connection. Period. Did you get that, Holly? You want me to do it again? You want to read it to me?
No lots located south of Alpine Run, or the alley south of Alpine Run may be sold or conveyed.
We'll stop there. South of Alpine Run, or south of the alley located across from Alpine Run. Or south of the alley located across Oak Opening Drive from Alpine Run. So, read that again, would you?
No lots south of Alpine Run, or the alley across Oak Opening Drive from Alpine Run.
These alleys have names, too. Which alley is it here?
Tricelso.
I can't, was that?
Is it B2OL1?
Yeah, I don't know what that alley is called.
I have no idea what that actually means.
Block Two, Lot One.
Or-
It's B2O-Lot One.
South of, get rid of the, or south of-
Do you have a question, other person Borisma?
Yeah, I just, I guess I'd like to ask directly of Regina. Your main objection to, I mean, I know, I know we had agreed to something different in the past, but what is your main objection to not allowing those lots to be sold or developed?
Again, as I said, unfortunately, because you sat out of our long discussion that day, you know, you would have heard it, but it's, again, it's a public safety issue to have that access to 138. You yourself said that it's a better design of a neighborhood to have that access to 138. And so, we feel like the more you build on that southern part of Jackson, the more congested it's going to be, and the more of a public safety issue it's going to be.
The issue is, has been for a couple of years now, Oak Opening access to 138.
Right, right.
I mean, it's just, we keep going into that, and-
That's why it was decided, the whole council was unanimous, once we kind of compromised on Alpine Drive. I started at Jackson, and we compromised at Alpine Run, and so that's why I want to make sure it's captured.
Yeah, the whole idea was, is to ensure that the road went all the way through to 138, so at the point where we decided what type of intersection would be there, the connection would be easily made.
So, at the point where, one final question for Regina, at the point that Oak Opening Drive connects to 138, you would anticipate that that whole section then be saleable and buildable?
Yep.
Right.
Because it gets rid of the public safety issue.
Right, it eliminates itself, but if we had an opening, if we had Oak Opening attached to 138, there wouldn't be even a problem with this discussion.
Right.
Okay, I think we got the language. If you want the clerk to read it again.
So, the motion was to add the following language-
I'm having a little trouble with this, because it's at the point where, okay, so we're going to have to come back to this whole plot, plat. When Oak Opening Drive does connect to 138, then we'll have to redo that.
No.
The road will be there, we just have to determine what kind of intersection is going to be made, and then by then, either the DOT will pay for it, or there'll be enough increment there to pay for the connection.
I think what Sid's saying is, Sid, what happens is, we don't, we won't have to, we will not have to revisit this again and change the plat, because all it's saying is that, in the agreement for this plat to happen, that, as part of that agreement, this stipulation must be fulfilled.
Yeah, and, or to say that, when, when that Oak Opening Drive gets attached to 138, that then-
That's already stated in that statement.
Then it would be, then it would be buildable and saleable.
That's already, that's built into that statement.
And that's how we should, yeah, that's how.
And that's what we thought we had when we were going through the developers' agreement, but there was a little bit of a confusion as far as exactly which lots were included in that. And what we're trying to do is clarify that.
Right, and I, I think it's a great incentive for the developer to, you know, again, and for the city council.
Hopefully, the developer agrees with you.
For the, for, I mean, it's a great incentive for having those become saleable lots after-
Right. I think we all have the same goal here. At the end of this thing, everything's going to be developed all the way down to 138. That's the goal. So, we have the language?
So, yeah, the language, I won't read the exact language, but the way it's drafted, what it would, what it would require is, development agreement will now, would, if this amendment is approved, the development agreement would have to prevent the sale of any of those lots that we've been talking about as Block Three, which are the lots along Alpine Run, and any of the lots south of the alley that extends across from Alpine Run. None of those lots could be sold until Oak Opening Drive is extended to Highway 138 by the developer.
Right here.
Okay, all right.
Yep.
Okay. So, that's, that's an amendment to the motion. And that's by other person Hirsch, is that correct?
Mm-hmm.
Was there a second?
Second.
Second by other person Riley. Any questions on the amendment?
Sure. Now, that, that language, or something like that is already in your documents, like you were looking?
Well, I already had a provision in the outline that we are working with for the development agreement that required this type of restriction. The confusion was, did it apply to those lots up by Alpine Run, or only the other lots going down there?
So, with this, then, you now have a understanding of what-
If this motion is adopted, it's very clear, it includes all those lots along Alpine Run as well.
Okay. So, would, even if it wasn't adopted, it would, it would, if it was not adopted, you would still have a clear direction, though, as to what, what the understanding of the council was?
If it's not adopted, then I think I would still ask the council to give me direction on exactly how you want that to be addressed.
Is that how you understood it, Dennis?
I don't know what you're really, you want us to put all of Alpine Run in, and we can't sell any of the lots on the south side of it?
That's-
Well, or you could turn the, I'm sorry, I guess I'm a comment.
If we don't do that, then who's going to put temporary cul-de-sacs on the end of all those streets coming down there?
I guess.
And that was our, our concern when we discussed this at a staff level, was that it didn't make sense to us to prohibit the sale of the lots on Alpine Run if they're going to build those, that street and put in that infrastructure. But, again, it's up to you guys.
Well, the whole thing is about getting Oak Opening to 138. Once that's done, hey, you can sell all those lots. It's just making sure that that road gets done, and there's no scrimping in this development. It's for our community, and it's a public safety issue. Like I said, we can, we compromise from Jackson Street down to Alpine Run. So, I think we did a great job.
Any other questions or comments on the amendment? All those in favor of the amendment, say aye.
Aye.
And any opposed to the amendment?
No.
The ayes have it?
And I, I will abstain from this one.
Okay. So, I think it was nine, two, one, is that right? So, the amendment passes, which takes us back to the original motion on the preliminary plat. Any questions on that as amended? Here are none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? None opposed, that carries. Item number nine is R. 6 of 2020, and that comes from the Plan Commission, and that's regarding certified survey map. Other person Carvello.
This is Resolution Six of 2020, a resolution by the Common Council of the City of Stoughton conditionally approving a certified survey map associated with Kettle Park West, and I so move.
Second? Second by other person Riley, other person Carvello.
And basically, I'm just going to throw this at Rodney again, if that's okay.
Similarly to the preliminary plat, this is related to the area to the south where Oak Opening Drive would be extended to Oak Opening, or to State Highway 138. The conditions of the resolution are outlined in the, in the document prohibiting sale of parcels on Lot One until that connection's made.
Do we have to amend it now to make sure that it reflects what we just discussed?
I don't think so, I'm, I'm going to it, though, to take a quick peek.
Other person Borisma?
That was my question, and whether or not that has to be amended based on what we just passed. Well, apparently not.
I'm just taking a look, I don't think it does.
Lots haven't changed, right?
Well, Lot One is, is-
So, there is a condition that requires that Lot One be dedicated to the city as public right of way. But with the condition that you already attached to the plat, that already prohibits the sale of any of those lots in the plat until Oak Opening is extended to 138. So, I don't think you need to impose that same condition again.
Okay, I just didn't know if you had to be consistent, or-
Item Three does already. Item Three in the resolution does. Indicates that development agreement prohibits the sale of-
Oh, lot, yeah. That's a different lot, though, but, but, yeah, that lot-
Yeah, because that's Lot One, which is not-
What's Lot One, Rodney, that's?
Lot One.
What is?
Lot One is the large lot that would have residential units built on it.
And so, not-
Lot One is this large parcel here. That's where the residential units would be built. Condition Three says you, the development agreement has to include language that that can't be sold for lots until such time the connection is made to State Highway 138, correct?
Correct. That's condition number-
Three.
Three in the resolution now. That Lot One cannot be sold or developed until the intersection at 138 is completed.
But how does Lot One fit in with the other map that we just looked at, because it's not-
It's south of Alpine Valley, Alpine Valley, south of Alpine Run.
Yeah, because it's, it's kind of, I'm trying to figure out where that is.
It's where the duplexes would go, if you remember the previous maps.
So, I, I think this is where this discussion has kind of migrated from. Recall, the CSM areas on the very southern tip of this.
That's where that lot-
So, there was never any disagreement that there wasn't going to be any sale of those lots. During the meeting in November, the discussion was about not having any of these parcels built on. I pointed out that in lieu of having temporary cul-de-sacs, in my opinion, it made sense to allow for lots north of Alpine Run to be constructed and built.
Right, and that's where we can't-
Yep, and during that point, I don't know that it was clear about the lots you just clarified in the last motion. Certainly, the intent of at least what I stated was, in recognition of the areas on Oak Opening Drive, along this corridor would no longer be, obviously, the CSM areas, no. But then, my understanding of what I described last time was, lots on Oak Opening Drive south of that area would not be allowed, so.
It's good that we clarified it then tonight.
So, back to the question, the question was, does this affect the CSM, and the answer is no, is that correct?
CSM resolution already addresses the issue, I think, in the way that you want-
So, is everybody good with that understanding? Any other questions? Here are none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? None opposed. Item 10 is discussion of possible action regarding recommendation from the Common Council to the Plan Commission to prepare an amendment to the TIF project plan for Kettle Park West Phase Two, the Meadows. So, basically, we put this on here, we'd like the council to give the Plan Commission their blessing to start that process, and there were some additional materials that were requested in your packet, and we can certainly go through the materials if you'd like us to kind of outline what this process looks like. But in a nutshell, the project plan that's required through the TIF process that needs to ultimately be approved by the Joint Review Board, the original project plan we did was only for Phase One. So, now that we're entering into Phase Two, we have to amend that project plan to include everything that would be part of the Phase Two. And certainly, if you want to get into deeper detail, we can do that. What is your preference?
Well, I would like either myself or somebody else to present the motion, so we can actually talk about this.
Okay. You want to present it?
Yeah, I can, I can present it to you. I move that we prepare, we ask that the city staff prepare an amendment to the TIF project plan for Kettle Park West Phase Two, the Meadows.
It will go through the Plan Commission.
Through the Planning Commission, correct.
Okay. Is there a second?
Sure, second.
Second by other person Jensen. And did you want to elaborate, or you want, Jamie can certainly walk through it if you want him to?
Yeah, I think, I think I would like to at least see it.
Okay.
Okay, so, this stuff actually isn't required as part of the, the project plan amendment, we just wanted to get ahead of the Plan Commission. The Plan Commission could go ahead and start this process, but basically, TIFs are the creature of a council, and you have the ultimate approval power at the end of- approval power. At the end of the day, once we go through Joint Review Board, Plan Commission and everything, city council still can vote this down. So we wanted to get you the list of projects in front of you, just to make you aware that this is the path that we think we would go with this project plan, just so there were no surprises, and we want to hear any objections you may have to these. At the end of the day, it doesn't bind us to doing any of this work. We can just do it if we choose to do it at some point in time.
Alder Person Jensen?
Thank you, Your Honor. I read through this when we got the information in the amended packet, and I guess my only question would be for President Mijesci, if you wouldn't mind. To me, you've had a chance to look through this. Do you find any, anything objectionable, or do you feel that this will help the Planning Commission?
Hopefully, it'll help the Planning Commission.
Hopefully, since we're both on there.
Yep. As are others.
Alder Person Legaki?
Question on process then. So if we were to approve Sid's amendment, Sid's suggestion, Planning Commission would go forward and then sort of keep us surprised as we, this happens, and then ultimately, this would come to council for a vote?
Yes, so the checklist is attached to the memo. There's multiple moving parts with this process. You have the Plan Commission part, you have the Joint Review part, and ultimately, it comes to council. There's public hearings involved, there's publications involved. I mean, that's, there's a lot of moving parts, parts once you head down this road. But ultimately, the city council can say yes or no once all the work is done. But we didn't want to put all the work in, in terms of getting the Joint Review Board together, having the Plan Commission do a bunch of work, obviously, forward development, city staff, LRS would all be involved in this. So there'd be some dollars involved too, and some time. We don't want to go down this road unless you had a feel for what the projects were that we were planning on putting in the project plan. But again, some of them we would, we would tie ourselves to through the Phase Two process and the developers' agreement and everything that we talked about back in November. The other ones are looking forward, you know, maybe 10 years from now in terms of extending water utility, some road work, things like that, that, hey, we may as well get it in the project plan. So if we decide to do it someday and there's enough revenue within that TIF, we can do it without having to amend the plan again. If we don't get in the project plan now, we can't do it.
So we're opening the door?
We're opening the door, is all we're doing with this, yes.
Alder Person Borisman?
And that was the purpose of my amendment, and that is to get, the, the Planning Commission's gonna have to get started at some point, and this allows them to get started, I think, with the project plan.
President Mijesci?
I was just gonna tell Alder Legaki that just because this is starting, doesn't necessarily mean it's approved for anything.
Gosh, no. They, they're, they're sort of asking for a blessing to get going.
Yeah, to get going so we could possibly stop them, if that was what the council would wish.
Any other questions or comments? Here are none. All in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? None opposed. Eleven we did, 12 is coming from the Finance Committee. Alder Person Jensen?
Nope, I'll take it.
R. Schumacher? R. 8, 2020.
R. 8, 2020, authorizing and directing the proper city officials to enter into an agreement with Speedway Sand and Gravel Inc. for the bio-swell to wet detention conversion project. So moved.
Second.
Second by Jensen. Alder Person Schumacher?
All right, so this is on South Academy Streets and East Streets, and like it says, converting the bio-swell to wet detention, and to improve the water quality and the flow of the water within that area. This is partially supported by grants from the DNR, and the bid was quite a bit under budget of what we had for that.
Anything you want to add, Director Shiel?
Yeah, the original estimate was approximately $300,000. It came in under, under that, so we're pleased with the, the two bids that we received. Speedway Sand and Gravel has done work in the city before and seems capable to handle this project for us this, this summer.
Okay. Questions or comments? Here are none. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? None opposed. Next item is Consideration of Possible Action Regarding Stafford Rosenbaum Conflict Waiver Regarding the Town of Dunn EMS Contract. Attorney Dregney, you want to just...
Yeah, our firm, one of my partners, Chris Hughes, has longstanding relationship with the Town of Dunn, has done work with them over the years. We were asked to review contracts that the city has with all of its partners with respect to EMS, one of those being the Town of Dunn. And so we needed to get both the Town of Dunn and the City of Stoughton to decide whether to allow us to review that agreement, notwithstanding the fact that my partner, Chris, has historically done work with the town. If we do, if, if the, so the town has already approved the waiver, if the city approves it, we, we would be, we already have reviewed the contract on behalf of the city, but not on behalf of the town.
Okay. And we've done this in different situations, so I'm looking for a motion. I'll make the motion to approve the waiver.
Second.
Second by Alder Person Harley. Any questions or comments?
Just a question. Do you see any, any ethical or problem with this?
This is the procedure that the Code of Ethics lays out for lawyers. So the issue for me is, I have to make a judgment about whether I can competently advise the city on this matter, notwithstanding the fact that my partner has this relationship with the Town of Dunn. I've made the decision that I can, but you have to make the ultimate decision whether to approve that.
And whether she be working on this?
Chris is a he, and he will not be working on this.
Oh, he, okay. Okay, thank you.
Questions or comments? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? None opposed. Thank you. R. 9 of 2020, this one is coming from Finance, and it's, Finance actually met on this one, it was actually November 12 of last year. This is coming from Alder Person Schumacher.
All right, R. 9, 2020, authorizing and directing the proper city official to enter into contracts covering calendar years 2020, '21, and '22 for emergency medical services with the following townships: Dunkirk, Dunn, Pleasant Springs, and Rutland. So moved.
Second.
Second by, was it Alder Person Reeves?
Yes.
Okay. Any discussion? Alder Person Schumacher?
This is contracts that are replacing the exist, the expired now 2019 contracts. Nothing much is changing as far as the wording goes in it. It's pretty close to what the contracts were prior, just the monies are different for the different years, just increasing from year to year.
Questions or comments from Alders? Here are none. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? None opposed, that carries. The last item actually didn't go through the committee, but we are asking for approval on an agreement with the Town of Rutland to make improvements to Oak Opening Drive and Deer Point Drive within the township. And this would be, is part of our, is required in the developers' agreement that we're working on. So I'm looking for a motion to begin that conversation.
I don't think so.
Motion by Riley, is there a second?
Second.
Second by, was it Caravelo? Okay. Anything you guys want to add to this one, Rodney?
This agreement is the agreement that would be conveyed to the town. We haven't initiated discussions, formal discussions with them. At this point, we wanted endorsement from the Council before doing so, related to the scope of the document. Oak Opening Drive in the Town of Rutland and Deer Point Drive are still intended to remain town roads, rural cross-sections. The proposed improvements would widen the pavement width on either side by five feet, and it would still have the rural cross-section with the ditches on the sides. As part of the TIF improvement plan, the city would proceed with that improvement following the roundabout construction as planned for 2021 at Robey Road and 51. That seems to be the logical time to actually do that. That way, the condition of that roadway would be brought up to a new roadway, a newer roadway condition after that, the completion of that roundabout. If everything comes together, Oak Opening Drive and Jackson Street, the extension of Jackson Street to Oak Opening and north might actually provide an alternative route to those rural businesses during the construction of the roundabout. So if, if Kettle Park West project moves as, as anticipated, we think that'll be a benefit. But this will resurface and repave that area and that rural section in the Town of Rutland in 2022 or thereafter. Doesn't define exactly, we, we need to have the TIF increment coming in, as we've indicated, in order to fund that effort, but it's anticipated to occur at a point of 2022 or thereafter.
Thank you. Any questions or comments? Who wants to go first?
I was gonna ask about the Finance not getting to this, whether there were concerns with that.
It wasn't presented to the Finance Committee?
Yeah, this wasn't on agenda.
It was something that is required in the developers' agreement, so we just brought it right here, that we, we could begin the discussion. This isn't really finalized as of yet, but we're hoping that once we sit down with them, it will be. Did you have a question, Alder Person Legaki?
That, as well as why, why it was not at Finance, so that was never the plan? Does this come back, since this is not final, according to what you just said?
It would, if there isn't any recommended changes coming out of the dialogue with the Town of Rutland, it would not need to come back to the committee. I think the reason internally it didn't go to the Finance Committee is because it was an item of mutual concern or interest for the entire council. And internally, we talked about whether it made sense to, or needed to go to Finance first, or if it could just proceed directly to council in light of the preliminary plat discussion and the other items on the agenda tonight.
And this agreement is similar to what we have on 138 with the DOT. So it really, you know, this one takes it a step further where we actually complete the work. But we have to have an agreement, since it's really, you know, in the township and not in the city, it's their role, not ours. So unless there's something specific in the agreement that you want to discuss, we're hoping to move forward.
And just wanting to clarify, there's no fiscal impact to our city, since this is theirs?
Correction, there is. This is part of an off-site, off, it's not part of the onsite improvements planned for the Kettle Park West. It's considered an off-site improvement. As part of the TIF discussion, you recall, this was identified as an off-site improvement that would be made once increment was available. The city would fund and proceed with this work with that funding.
If, if the TIF is approved.
And, and if the increment is available to do the work.
Right. So it won't be coming out of the CIP?
Nope. And if all of those conditional things happen, do we have a sense of what is the potential fiscal impact to the TIF?
$690,000.
Any other questions or comments? Alder Person Hirsch?
If the roundabout is being put in in 2021, and I know we need the increment to put this in, could it, could we change the language to be, you know, between 2021 and 2022 if the increment involved? I mean, I'd hate to have to wait a whole nother year after the roundabout to put in, if we have the money to put it in sooner.
Well, logistically, I don't think we want to be constructing this improvement at the same time the roundabout is being improved.
Right, I was thinking it'd be like right after. So you're just saying, as soon as that, the roundabout is done, then we can work on that?
And, you know, and the TIF projections anticipate it to be probably the 2022 horizon as well.
Yeah, if, if they do the roundabout, well, they're gonna do it in 2021. We don't know if it'll be in the spring, or summer, or late fall. We just don't, at this point, we don't know that answer. If it was done in the spring and we're in a position to do it, I would think we would consider moving forward with it. But we just don't know.
All right, thank you.
Any other questions or comments? Seeing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? None opposed?
Move to adjourn.
Motion by Jensen, the second by Harley. Any discussion? Here are none. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? None opposed. Thank you.